Hello and welcome to the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oilin. Today, we have a special recorded edition of this session for you. It is Thanksgiving Day today here in the U.S. and we are, as a team, celebrating with our families. We hope that you are having a fantastic day wherever you are in the world. And if you're here in the U.S., happy Thanksgiving to everyone here. We're so grateful to be a part of the business that you're growing and just honored to be a part of the support system for your journey. So whether you are new here today and you're getting to know Get Oilin or you are a valued member of our community, we really are thankful for you and the ability to do this work together. Now, today I have put together a special training for you. We're going to talk about what we can do right now to grow Young Living in 2026. What we do right now here at the end of this year is going to have a massive impact on the results that we see going into the new year. And we're going to get a couple of ideas in place, get a little bit of a plan going so that we can move into the new year with intention and start seeing those results that we want. So today, we are going to zoom out and decide what we actually want our business to look like in 2026. We're going to choose one or two systems to tighten up right now. And we're going to bring our business into alignment with everything that we need in one place. And we will talk about an action list that we can work through between now and the new year to start getting these things tuned up and ready for growth. Now, really importantly, before we get started, I think, I think it's really critical that you understand that the context that I am approaching these topics with here today is one that respects your balance. Because I am of the mindset that we should not have to sacrifice our balance, our health for the sake of hustle to be able to grow this business. Now, a lot of us maybe have reached success in this business solely because of hustle activity. And that's fine, but what you probably already know, and if you don't know this yet, you learned this today, that is not really sustainable, right? And what I want you to know how to do are things that actually create growth on a sustainable basis in your business. So if that's interesting to you, I hope that you stick around. I've got some really exciting stuff to share with you here today. So make sure you watch this video all the way to the end. And of course, we're excited to get back together with you next week. By the way, if you'd like to do that, make sure you're on our list. Get oiling.com/weeklyworksession is where you can go to hop on to our live Zoom calls every week and get our recordings. You'll also be the first to receive our blog posts as we post them and any resources that we might share week to week. If you would like to work together on a live call, this is free and it's an option to anyone who is a part of our community. So if you are working on a project, you want some hands on your work, you want to review things together, this is all an option. Get oiling.com/web site review is where you can go and sign up for this totally free opportunity, excuse me, to work together on Thursdays in the second half of our live calls. And if you would like, you can actually hire our team. If you need help and you would like to have some of this work done for you or all of it, you can go to good oiling.com/concierge, learn more about our team and get a quote for your project. So let's talk about how we intentionally move into 2026 to create the growth that we want while keeping the balance that we need, right? Feel the healer, let's make sure that we stay on point with ourselves so that we can show up at our best to the rest of the world. So how are we going to get that done? First, we need to understand that right now is the time to start thinking about January, right? We don't want to start making our resolutions on January 1st. We want to make sure that we are super clear about what we want during this season, during this time of this year, so that we can walk into 2026 truly new and ready for what's to come. So we have a little over a month left in 2025 right now. It's crazy how fast it's gone by, but it is important right now that we start setting these intentions and get clear on what we're going to do next. And look, I know this is a very busy season for most of us. So what you're going to learn today is very simple and sustainable. If you've got a little more time, you can max out what I'll be talking about. But if you're working on very limited time, this is going to be doable for you too. Okay, so holiday season is also going to show you what's working in your business, what keeps moving when you take a step back and what stalls out. If you've ever had to sit back a season in your business, then you understand what keeps moving when you aren't moving. And if the answer is everything keeps moving when you stop moving, then it's going to become very critical for you to get some key systems in place so that sustaining your business looks like something that is more sustainable for you. And so what we'll talk about today are a couple of small decisions that we can make now, right now, to make January feel calmer, more intentional and, and to actually have the coming year bring you the results that you're looking for, for your business. Now, let's talk about what growth should actually look like for us. Beginning with leads, we need more new people finding out who we are, discovering that there's some, that we are someone that they want to hear from and having those people actually choose to engage with us, right? Maybe they're joining your classes, they're following and engaging with you on social. Maybe they're getting onto your list and they're getting your weekly wellness tips, whatever that looks like. We need more people who like what you have to say, who are curious about what you do and who are ready to hear you showing up and showing you that that's the case, right? Really important. We also need to make sure that our customers who were getting started are discovering their hero product as soon as possible and maxing out their monthly rewards, right? So we want those loyalty rewards customers really out of the gate if we can. And we want them to see the benefit of going big. And the only way that we're really going to get them to do that is if we've got contacts, right? Is if we're able to actually help them discover the product that they can't live without, because that's what creates the domino effect. Then those add-on products that they want to use alongside that one that they love, those start to build up. And before long, you've got a customer who is independent, who doesn't need your reminders, who actually shows up and orders every month, always gets what they need, right? Because they're locked in. So that's a really important phenomenon we need to create as well. And then we need a simple rhythm for sharing, inviting and following up that fits our real life. Because there is no avoiding the live human interaction that needs to take place in this business. This is a relationship business, but what this looks like can be something that is a little bit more leveraged. It can be something that has a little bit more automation powering it. It's not never going to be totally automated, but it needs to be something that is a system that is, I've used the word rhythm here because really what we are looking to do is to establish a pattern that's familiar that we can repeat, right? And it needs to be something that fits into the life that you're living. And maybe more importantly, the life that you want to be living. Because I will never tell you to do something that I would never do. And I don't believe that hustle should have to be the thing that we do. We shouldn't have to burn ourselves out just to try to create some movement. I don't think that that's necessary. And you're going to learn more about what that looks like here on this call today. And then, of course, what growth actually looks like is not doing it all on your own, not running all on your brain power off of, you know, signup sheets from your vendor events and post-it notes on your computer. What you need is everything in one place in terms of your tools and of course, the support to help you get it done. And of course, you get all of that here with Get Oilin. So I want you to begin with looking at the systems that you use for three main avatars, we'll say, or three main groups in your business. First one being those leads, any new curious contact who has never ordered. So this is a non-customer lead. Then brand new customers, if you are in a season where you're actively enrolling, this is going to be the folks who have placed their first order recently. Maybe they're a newer customer in the last six months. They haven't maybe discovered their hero product yet. Maybe this is someone that you got started, but you maybe dropped the ball. Cause that happens when we don't have a rhythm, when we don't have a system that we're following repeatedly. And then another group still, and this is going to be something that I would only recommend that you focus on. If you've got a large team and you are still taking the steps to put yourself out there and get new leads coming in. But, but your people who have ordered that are maybe not ordering regularly that you'd love to see come back and order again. So we're going to pick one of these groups and we're going to keep them in mind for the rest of this training. And, and we're going to kind of talk through what it looks like to establish and come up with a couple of systems to help support these three different groups. All right, so there are three simple steps that we're going to have any of these folks follow. So whether you are picking leads, new customers or existing customers, there are going to be three steps essentially that we want to make sure that we're covering in this system. First one is we want to identify what it looks like for them to get started, right? So where, what is their entry point? And this doesn't have to be a single space, but you know, for leads, for instance, this is going to be someone who engages with your social content. Ideally, there's someone who has actually opted in on your website, put their name and email into a form. These could be people who have given you their information at an event, right? They could be someone who has attended one of your events, right? So these are people who are in your orbit, who have come into your orbit through some specific way. Again, ideally, they have opted in, they've put their name and email somewhere in on your Good Oilin website, right? But this could also include folks who have DM'd you and asked you questions, who have texted you, who you have spoken with in person, right? So somebody who has shown interest, that's leads. Obviously, new customers, that's quite clear. We're getting our new customers started, that's clear as well. Now, the second step is we want to make sure that we are giving them something of value, right? We need to teach them something useful or we need to share something interesting with them. And we need to make sure that we're staying in touch with them. And then the final step is we want to make sure that we're moving them forward. Alright, so moving them forward for any of these three groups is going to entail some kind of conversation with you. Now, in Momentum, we get into, you know, your, your wellness consults, which is what you would offer to your leads. That's something that takes a little bit more time, gives you an opportunity to get to know that person a little better so that you can put them in front of the right list of products that's going to help them get started in the best way possible, right? But for your existing customers, whether those are older customers or customers that you've just gotten started, we want to get them onto consults as well. They'll just be shorter calls. And I'm not talking about getting on calls where you spend 45 minutes, listen to all of their concerns and then place their order for them. I'm talking about 10 minutes, 15 minutes, where you do a quick check-in. You know, the products they're using, you know, the goal they're working on. And maybe you've provided some suggestions for them, maybe diet, lifestyle, et cetera, that helps support them in that journey toward that goal, right? So all of these, all roads lead to a quick one-on-one with you. If you're a customer or a more extended one-on-one or a class with you, if they are a lead. Okay, so what are we doing? We are identifying who our groups are, right? We are inviting them to something, right? And sharing something of value with them. And sometimes these two things go together, right? So a consult is a thing of value, I should hope. And you also have the ability to share other things too. The point here is, is that we want to stay top of mind. We do that by sharing value and then we want to engage toward next steps. And with Young Living, because it's a relationship-based business, all roads need to lead to some kind of quick interaction that is a direct one with you and your person, right? So our number one job is to make sure that these three steps are clear and repeatable. And in Get Oilin, the steps are pretty clear and repeatable. I'll show you what that looks like here in just a second. So if you already use Get Oilin, here's what you're going to do. We're going to pick the tag or the list that matches the group that you chose. Now, if the leads that you have been identifying are people that are connecting with you on social, what I want to encourage you to do is reach out to them and say, hey, I'd like to send you an email with this valuable thing or I'd like to invite you to come to this class or I have weekly wellness tips. Would you like to sign up for them, right? And then what you want to do is you want to take those people who are on social and get them signed up for this thing so that they are a lead in your Get Oilin system. And your leads in your system, depending on how they come in, they're going to have a tag, right? So you're going to have a tag of people. That's going to be maybe your leads who came in from a vendor event or your leads from Facebook or your leads that do your weekly wellness tips or whatever that looks like. You're going to identify the group of people. Obviously, for your customers, this is a matter of performing a VO download from your Young Living account and then uploading that CSV file into Get Oilin. And Get Oilin will actually identify for you whether or not that person is on Loyalty Rewards. So what you may do is choose to upload that list, find the people who aren't on Loyalty Rewards and work on connecting with them so that you can get them onto a wellness track where they find products that they love and they become wellness, or sorry, they become Loyalty Rewards customers as well. So we're going to identify the group in your Get Oilin account. This is going to mean filtering your contacts for a tag or several tags. And then you'll choose where we're going to send them. So we are going to send them to a landing page. So if this is a leads, we might say, you know, hey, I've got this download or hey, I've got weekly wellness tips, which is something that Get Oilin provides for you. You can send them, if you have an event coming up, to an event registration page or in any case, all three of these cases, you can offer a wellness consult so that you can kick off the process of communication with them toward getting that hero product discovered. And then we want to make sure, because in order for, for us to send them any of these things, we need to actually send something. So we need to make sure that they get at least one clear email from you. I want you to make sure that you are sending a message out to this group, inviting them to an event, inviting them to read something that you put on your blog even, right? I am leaning toward recommending that you send them toward registration opportunities. So a landing page, event registration page or a consult, because this is going to provide a clear indicator that this person is ready to take next steps, right? So make sure that you are sending that email out, providing that next step. And then in Get Oilin, we have this feature called follow-up plans that systematizes your to-do list. So you can create a follow-up plan that maybe reminds yourself to reach out on a personal level. Maybe, you know, comment on something on their social or shoot them a DM or text them if you have their phone number. Send them a personal note after a few days, after you've sent out this email so that you can make sure that you are staying in touch with this group of people. And I do want you to make sure that you're just focusing on one of these groups at a time, right? Because what we are trying to do is institute systems here. And so, so you want to make sure that we're just working on one. And then once you've got that one worked on, you can begin working on the next, right? But it is as simple as identifying who, deciding what and sending and then coming back a little bit later. So using that follow-up plan to remind yourself to come back and reach out. Because at the end of the day, our most important steps that we need to be taking on a regular basis involve one-on-one communication with people. And that can be really, really time-consuming if we don't have systems. But this can be something that works even with somebody who has very little time to spare, so long as you are going about this in a way that is simple and sustainable. All right, so our short 2026 action list to get started, to tighten up these systems. So we're going to name that group that we're going to focus on first. And then we're going to write out those three steps that we've already set up here, right? So we are going to identify who the people are, filter your system for the tag. We're going to identify what we're going to share with them and we're going to send them a message to share it, right? And then, of course, bonus points there. Make sure that you have that follow-up plan so that you can be reminded to reach out, right? So we're going to set all these things up and then make sure that we're coming back weekly to check at that, check and take a look at that path and make sure that we are following up on next steps. So what we want to do is just make sure that we're getting as many people as possible as engaged as we can, right? All right, now, if this sounds at all overwhelming to you, confusing to you, I get it. You're not alone here. This is not something, you know, thinking about using tech and email marketing and all of these things. When you decided that you wanted to help, you know, work on Gary's mission to get oils into every home, you probably didn't think that you would need to learn to be, you know, an internet marketer. And, and look, you don't really have to learn to be an internet marketer. You do get to learn from people who know more about those things so that you can just learn what you need to know. But no matter what, the difficulty at the end of the day, whether you're learning Get Oilin or you're learning Young Living, is that we often feel alone doing the work that we do, right? I don't know about you, but I hear so many stories from people so often that they don't have upline support, right? And if they do, their upline maybe is using more old-school tactics or, you know, whatever that looks like, like what they're doing is maybe not what you want to do, right? And so it is really easy to feel isolated and alone. So what I want to invite you to consider is that you don't have to, right? You aren't alone when you have Get Oilin. In fact, with Get Oilin, you have everything that you need to grow your business and it's all under one login, one roof, one place with everything that you need. All you need to do is take your VO file, pop it into Get Oilin, tune into the trainings that we have, use the things that we create for you and you can grow a business on your terms. And you don't need to go and buy 17 different types of software and learn all these different things. We're here, we've got you. We're brand partners too. And for the last 10 years, we have served thousands upon thousands and thousands of brand partners from all over the world who want to grow Young Living on their terms. And I'm just so glad that you're here today, listening to this, right? So here's what I want to share with you. This Black Friday, you're not just going to find the best deal on business tools. Cause I mean, at the end of the day, I would put anything you find on the internet up against what we have. We have real human support and we have, in that real human support, the developer of this platform who is listening to you when you say, could you please make it do that? The features that we have in Get Oilin are here because someone like you asked for them, right? This all started when Greg needed to create a website for his wife Amanda, who couldn't find one that she really liked to be able to promote her Young Living events, right? And 10 years later, we have an enormous community of folks from all over the world doing highly sophisticated things and also very simple, familiar things with these tools, saving in some cases, thousands of dollars a month on those tools, okay? The important thing for you to know is that the tools are here. And while you may not be familiar with all of the tools and what they're used for, you don't have to worry about knowing everything because you've got the how-to and support built right in to Get Oilin. Like I said, real humans, you can talk to us, we will hop on Zoom calls with you. We've got a Facebook community and we've got incredible opportunities to work together. So stick around how you can learn how you can score big this season with the specials that we're offering and set yourself up for your best year yet with Young Living. And look, whether you're considering a move to Get Oilin or you are already a member of this incredible community, you've got a lot to, to take in here. There are some fantastic opportunities for you to plug in, learn and grow and level up what you're doing. So have a look at this, all right? Now, if you are here with us or you're getting started with us, Momentum is for everyone. There are limited seats and I hope that you will give this a look. If you are serious about growing your business into 2026 and beyond and you want to make sure that you have the right systems in place, look no further. And at the price that we're selling this for, it's, we're not just giving it away, you're taking our money. Not kidding, so let's talk about this. The whole goal of Momentum is to get you set up with systems that build consistency into your business, both in how you need to be operating to run it and in the results you should expect, right? So the goal here is to get you to a point where you are signing up one, two, three, four new customers per week consistently and keeping them for life. And this, what's built in here is live support, easy-to-use tools and systems that actually work to grow a brand partner business. And this is coming from the perspective of someone who has been an expert called on by leaders across this industry and by corporate entities across this industry for almost two decades and who has worked for almost a decade here exclusively with Young Living brand partners and teams to get these things done. So none of this is theory, 100% of this is based on what actually works. And really importantly, what works so that you can grow without having to do that soul-sucking, life-breaking hustle that you may have been taught that you need to do to grow this business. I believe that you can grow this on your own terms sustainably by building your brand first. And I'm going to talk to you more about what that looks like here in just a bit. Now, Momentum is, at the end of the day, a complete blueprint for brand partners built on the three core systems that you need to have locked in to grow your Young Living business and keep it growing without it being something that requires you spending your whole life on it, right? You didn't build this to have a job and I don't want that to be your life, right? So what we'll do in Momentum is plug into proven systems that attract leads, help you to have better conversations with those leads, turn them into customers and have those customers stick around for the long haul. And you'll learn how to keep growing even when life gets busy. This really is all about setting a sustainable rhythm in place for your business so that you are growing on a continuous basis, so that your leads are coming in consistently, so that you see them stick around once they become customers, love those products that they're using so much that they can't help but share. And I think, you know, after many years of, of going to aromas sharing before convention and meeting so much of our, so many of our community in person, I have people come up to me every year at our table and say, I just feel like I'm not getting the most out of my tools. And I think that it's really funny when I hear this because nobody that uses Get Oilin needs to make the most out of every single tool Get Oilin offers. Cause it really is a choose your adventure, choose your path. You can make it work for you however you want to work it, right? So you don't need to know how to do everything in Get Oilin to get the most out of it. But there are a few key things that you do need to know how to use, that you do need to know how to do and on a consistent basis to get the results that you want. And those are the things that we do here. Only what you need, none of what you don't. Of course, there are other things you can expand into. This is incredibly beginner-friendly and it works with any Get Oilin plan level. It's not advanced. There are advanced options that you can level up on, but all of this core stuff is truly just the stuff that works, alright? These are the systems that you need and with Momentum, it's the support that you might have been missing. So this starts with a half-day live setup workshop. This is hands-on, we all move forward together, no one gets left behind. You leave this call with everything set up in your system exactly as it needs to be set up so that you can move forward with the systems that Momentum teaches, right? This isn't just watching videos or just sitting and listening to something. This is active, this is doing, this is making sure that in your Get Oilin system, you have every, everything there that you need to have. You also have on-demand curriculum, right? Because I know we all have busy lives, you may or may not be able to attend the entirety of a live call. The videos are recorded, by the way, and you could always go back and watch them during the session of Momentum that you're in. But the curriculum is there for you to reference. You've got monthly live coaching calls that focus on the three different systems in your business. And you've got several times a week, drop-in office hours that you can use if you need them, skip them if you don't. If you are stuck at any point, you are never left that way unless you don't want to show up, right? The, the help is there, the opportunities are there. If you are someone who feels like you need a little extra help, this is such a fantastic opportunity to be able to get that help, plug into a system, a simple one that's doable. And of course, be off to the races going into the new year, alright? Now, this round of Momentum, these are 90-day runs of Momentum that we do, this season of Momentum, the doors are going to close for this one at 11:59 PM Eastern Time on Sunday, the 30th of November. Right, because in early December, we're going to have our first workshop and we're going to be preparing ourselves for our run into the first quarter of 2026, right? So we do this on a quarterly basis. What we're going to be doing is really making sure that we have our systems in place that we're launching into the new year with everything that we need, all of our planning done, our content sorted out. We know how we're showing up, when we're showing up. And we probably have all, a lot of the work done ahead of time, which is pretty cool. So this is something that if, if you're interested in making sure that you're going into the new year with better practices, with sustainable systems, this is a phenomenal opportunity. And when we have enough people signed up for it, we will be closing the doors. We, we may close them prematurely even because we need to make sure that we are actually able to adequately serve you if you show up. So do make sure, again, if this is for you, grab this, you're going to love it. So that half-day intensive, we sell half-day intensives on our other platform that we offer to non-oily people. I have sold half-day intensives for even more than $4.97. That would be a steal at that price. This is included. The Momentum curriculum, course on its own, again, normally sell courses for a price like this. It's included here. Monthly live coaching, I would argue, we could probably charge $4.97 or $2.97 for that as well. That's included here. Those pop-in office hours, we meet for 45 minutes twice a week if we don't, and, and once a week if we have a live coaching call that week. So there are two opportunities every week to meet if you need help, right? There's no shortage of support here. And you get tools, you get templates, all of this stuff that we actually just plug right in. You don't have to start from scratch for anything. You can be brand new to Get Oilin and get started. And guys, it's $1.97. You're basically taking our money at this price. So I hope that you take advantage of this. By the way, the, the link to get started with this is in your dashboard. When you log into Get Oilin, you'll see Momentum right there if it's still available and you'll be able to click and purchase. And by the way, if you are a team leader, get in touch with me for a way to bring your team. If you're interested in bringing your people with you, we've got a way to get that done, alright? So if you want to get your team plugged into using Get Oilin, following these simple systems and growing sustainably, we've got a way to get it done and make sure that you check out that link in your dashboard. Now, another fantastic opportunity, this only comes up a couple of times a year. Now, another fantastic opportunity, this only comes up a couple of times a year. Our concierge team has this special package that they offer for you if you are ready to get your website worked out. So this is awesome. You're going to be able to get your custom website done for over 50% off and start connecting in a way that's uniquely you. So with Get Oiling, when you get started with us, you have a website that's already built and it's a replicated website and it's lovely. It's attraction marketing-based. It's not something that is, um, you know, it doesn't give away Young Living right away, right? It, it leans on curiosity. It helps you to actually get people curious about the events that you're offering, things like that, right? Uh, but if you wanted to create your own custom website, you don't have to do that on your own. Our team can do it for you with Brand Launch Essentials. This entails three one-on-one live calls with our experts. This is a done-with-you thing. They're actually going to be moving the mouse and clicking, but you're going to be saying, here's who I am, here are the colors I like, et cetera. They'll get all that worked out with you. So your brand guideline, your logo, your FavaCon, the development of the copy, which are the words that we use on your website, and the setup of that website using our five essential website templates. If you would like to have all of this done for you so that you have a website that you are proud to share, that is custom, that is your own, this is only $450 right now, which for five pages website, like I, I dare you to go find a place that'll do that for this price, especially, uh, for folks who know how to write, uh, for Young Living brand partners, right? So this is a fantastic opportunity if you're interested in getting your website dialed in. Now, if you're new to Get Oiling and you're curious about getting started, there is no better time of year than right now to do it. So here's what you'll get start, when you get started at any plan level. We have built-in courses. Our weekly wellness content, uh, is not a course. It's actually stuff that we create for you. Uh, I would say this is about a $1,200 value, uh, because every single month, we've got content ready-made that's plugged in, ready for you to share, that you can send out to your people. Right? So you can send out and it's every week of, uh, sorry, every Tuesday of every week of the entire year, you've got this content done for you and there's a funnel to get your leads signed up as well. So you've got a done-for-you education funnel for leads and customers, weekly wellness tip emails that we share with you for the whole year. And the setup takes just five to 15 minutes a month, depending on how much you want or need to customize it. And this content is coded to your Young Living member numbers. So when you send these emails out and someone clicks and they go buy a product, that's your customer. We also have the Move Your Groups Masterclass. If you're someone who wants to move your groups off of Facebook, this is for you. You can create leverage systems to educate and engage your customers and brand partners outside of the confines and distraction of Facebook. You can easily facilitate discovery and immersion in a focused, supportive environment that is your virtual kitchen table. And you can build greater depth and value in how you serve your community. We also have the Brand My Business Workshop. So if you're not as interested in a done-for-you or done-with-you option like the Brand Launch Essentials, we have an entire course that has those templates and walks you through exactly how to do it yourself, if that's what you prefer, and it comes free with your Get Oiling account. So you can take the guesswork out of creating and expressing your personal brand. We've got workbooks and templates for easy implementation and you can create a functional website that works for your brand and business in a weekend, right? Just set aside a couple of days, have the whole thing done. We also have the Email Marketing Mastery Course. Uh, this is pivotal, especially if you have a larger list of people, larger list of customers that you want to communicate with and you want to get better at what it looks like to send good emails that get your, uh, get your business moving. Email still is king. I know people like to use text because it's a little bit more push and interruptive, but there is nothing better in the world than having a list of people who like to open your emails, who will buy things when you send them emails that say, buy stuff, right? And I want you to have that reality. This teaches you how to do it. So we've got systems here that support you and how you communicate with your customers and brand partners, very specific guidelines about these things. We talk about smart strategies to help you stay in their inbox so your messages are read. And we talk about how to grow and nurture your list like a pro. The Marketing Mastery Workshop focuses on four core systems that run a brand partner business and you'll learn how to run those so you can grow the business you want your way. It's a complete blueprint from day one to royal crown diamond and you can grow your business like a master marketer. This is something I actually had diamonds and even crown diamonds reach out to me after going through this workshop to tell me, uh, that they, well, lament to me that if they had known, uh, of a system like this, they would have reached that rank twice as fast. And I do believe they're right because we don't gatekeep information around here. It's, it's all in there and, uh, it's pretty simple to follow. We also have the Lead Generation Workshop. If you want to have a custom funnel to collect leads from your website, you can grow your list and start real conversations with this very quick and easy step-by-step in less time that you would take to Netflix a show, you can have a funnel. It's beginner-friendly. We've got done-for-you templates and, uh, and you can have that funnel ready to share in an afternoon. But look, that's not all. Those are all of the, we've got content, we've got courses. We give these things to you when you get started with a Good Oiling account. But check this out. Right now, when you get started at basic or higher monthly, you could get the word out with free two-way texting for three months. So if you are someone who wants to text, you can port your number over from another service if you're already using a texting service, or you could select a new one with us. This covers that and it's going to cover your ability to keep using it for three months. You can teach your heart out with three months of free unlimited vaults and classes. So if you want to offer courses, private member area, et cetera. Uh, if you are someone who wants to get into email marketing, which I hope you do, you're going to have 200 extra marketing credits to use on your account per month for the life of your account. So this is forever if you get started now. And you, of course, you get our all-in-one platform, that full training library that I just shared with you. And it's only a dollar for your first month. Now, if you're looking for serious growth and you really like saving money, you're going to love this. When you get started at basic or higher annual, you get a whole month of Get Oiling for free. You get a whole year of two-way texting. You get a whole year of unlimited vaults and classes. And you get a thousand extra marketing credits per month for the life of your account. You get a free domain or email address of a domain. Uh, that's going to save you a ton of money. You get your all-in-one platform with Get Oiling. You get the full training library that I mentioned and it comes with a 30-day money-back guarantee. Now, if you are getting started with us at annual premium, you can get started with us with an exclusive sit-down tech consult so we can make sure that you're super clear on what needs to go where, especially if you are migrating over from other platforms. If you are getting started with us at pro, uh, or diamond at an annual level, you could also get a strategy consult with us. Again, this is talking about how we can level up your business, your brand, putting yourself out there. Uh, this is something that, uh, we'd normally charge $500 for. And of course, you get this for free when you get started at those plan levels. So if you are someone who knows, maybe you've been looking at Good Oiling for a while and you are maybe just considering now being the time to get started, this is a great bonus to take advantage of as well. So make sure that you check out the link below this video. If you are already a member of Get Oiling, log into that dashboard. You're going to see Brand Launch Essentials and Momentum there for you to take advantage of. But again, if you have not gotten started with Get Oiling yet, now is the best time. It's a dollar for your first month, or if you want to go annual, it's a 30-day money-back guarantee. We are here for you. We can't wait to work with you. Go ahead and click the link below or head over to get oiling.com to get started and I'll see you next week.